It's my pleasure to welcome everyone tonight. I call this meeting to order. Let's have our roll call, please. Let's stand for our invocation and pledge.
Let's all pray. Father, we thank you this evening for your many blessings upon us. We thank you once again for this great county that we live in and for the people that live in this county. We thank you also, Father, for the privilege we have of representing those citizens on this board. We pray that you might guide and direct us this evening in each and every decision we make. We pray that we will put the citizens first and that each decision we make would glorify you. These blessings we pray in your holy name. Amen.
Please flag, please.
A diligence to the flag of the United States of America. A good republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda, Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir. Motion to approve.
Second. All right, let's vote. All right, our first order of business then is the public hearing, item number six.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The Rural Operating Assistance Program Grant, otherwise known as ROP, is a state-funded public transportation program which is administered by the North Carolina Department of Public Transportation. This grant includes funding for elderly and disabled transportation assistance, or EDTAP, employment transportation, and rural general public, otherwise known as RGP. Allocated funding to Pitt County for this year is: EDTAP was $89,413; employment was $69,684; and rural general public is $83,332. I attached the state management plan and I also attached the recommendations by the Pitt Area Transit Advisory Board from their September 25 meeting. One of the requirements is that we hold a public hearing. And I come before you to ask if you would open the public hearing.
Thank you. I declare the public hearing open. Anyone desire to speak at this time? Second call, anyone want to speak? If not, I declare the public hearing closed. What's the pleasure to board?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
Second.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
All right, Mr. Wanda.
This is for a final review of the Patheon Project. $159 million invested, 488 jobs created, including developmental research.
I declare the public hearing open. Anyone desire to speak? If not, I declare the public hearing closed. I don't believe you require any other transaction on that tonight, so thank you. All right, Mr. Elliott.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Item number seven, presentation. You have a young man tonight to be recognized as a member of the Boy Scouts of America who has earned the rank of Eagle. If the board would like to take action on that before we go down.
Motion to approve.
Second. All right, let's vote. Everybody wants to be seen with this young man. Come on out. Got anybody to take your pictures?
If you'd like to join the crowd, we can have someone take a picture if you like. Danny, can you... Chairman, you'd like me to proceed and read the resolution?
Be pleased.
Okay, I'll let this gentleman join us. Before I read it, let me just state that nationally, out of the Boy Scouts, who are in the Boy Scouts of America, there's probably 4% to 5% that go on to earn the rank of Eagle Scout. In Pitt County, it's a little higher than that. It's about 5% to 6%, a couple percentage points higher. So we're proud of the young men in Pitt County that do take the effort to go on to earn the rank of Eagle. It takes much effort, as I normally say every time a group comes before us, in terms of planning, execution, the number of hours, both you, an individual, as well as the scout leaders, as well as the other Boy Scouts who help in each project. So, Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead and proceed and read this. It's entitled Certificate of Appreciation is awarded to Alex Thomas Lilly for achieving the Eagle Scout Award for his project. He refurbished the nursery at the Pentecostal Holiness Church in Bethel, North Carolina. This is presented by the Pitt County Board of Commissioners this 23rd day of October 2014, and signed by our chairman, Mark W. Owens. Mr. Owens.
Thank you, young man. I know your family is extremely proud of you, but in addition to that, everyone present here tonight that's viewing this, and those that will hear about it tomorrow, extremely proud of you. And now you tell us some words of wisdom.
It was a very good experience. I enjoyed every minute we took part in the project and as have been a scout.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Manager.
Yes, sir. Under public addresses to the board, we have two people signed up. I believe the second person may be for the public, well, not public hearing, but on the, one of the rezoning matters, but I'll call them up. Jenny Byron, Brian, should you come forward, please? Give us your name and address.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jenny Bryan. My address is 1500 Manning Forest Drive, A3, Greenville, North Carolina. I'm here tonight on behalf of the faculty and staff of South Central High School. I'm here to ask you to mark your calendars for the week of November 17th through the 21st. South Central High School will be hosting our second annual education engagement project. November 17th through the 21st is American Education Week, and once again, we will be celebrating that by inviting local community leaders and members into our classrooms to work with the teacher for a day. Commissioners Webb and Commissioners Garris participated with us last year. Hopefully, they enjoyed that experience and learned a lot from it. We certainly enjoyed having them. And we would invite you all, again this year, to come out and work with the teacher, ideally for a full school day. The activities from 8:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m., the lesson planning, the classroom management, the extra meetings that go into that. So you can participate with us in not only the challenges, but the successes that we're having out at South Central High School. So tomorrow, you'll be receiving an official and a formal invitation in your email. There's an RSCP link we would ask you to complete by November 1st if you're able to participate with us. And if you have further questions, you can, of course, contact me. I'll be providing my email information. And if you can't commit to a full day, we certainly understand and would love to have you for as much time as we could get you. Thank you.
Thank you. Continued a good work.
Next, we have David Davenport.
This is in response to the rezoning request put in by Mr. Whitehurst. My comments here today are going to be pretty similar to what they were at the public hearing a couple months ago. We met a couple times with James Rhodes and with Mr. Whitehurst, and quite honestly, we are still a little uncomfortable with the rezoning request. You know, Pac-Tolus for us is our home, is where we work, is where we spend the majority of our time, and we do like to know what's going on in the community and keep up with the changes that go on there. And we just haven't felt like, through this whole process, that the, that we've gotten any information about exactly what the rezoning request is all about. So here again, we just feel very strongly, you know, as landowners ourself, we feel strongly that it's not up to neighbors to tell another neighbor what he can do with his land, but we feel like that is the role of the, of the planning board and then, and then your vote here. So those are, those are my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Davenport. Appreciate you coming up. All right, Mr. Manager.
That's all we have signed up, sir.
I'll leave you next.
Okay, item number nine, Adams Report. Under the manager's report, a couple things to note. The first one, on next meeting dates, in the month of November, you'll have first and third Monday, the 3rd and the 17th, 9:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m., respectfully. Item B is what I bring to the board's attention. As you're aware, through the Canine Control Ordinance that was adopted this past spring with effective date of January 1, however, there's component of that for the billing and collection for the dog licenses for unincorporated Pitt County. That has begun, the first series of billing has gone out, so owners of dogs who have had their rabies shots will, through those records, will be receiving notice of the billing on that. Item C, want to let you know that the Pitt-Greenville Airport had applied for a small community air service development program grant. This is a federal grant, and unfortunately, they were unsuccessful in this. I believe this was their second attempt, but they, I think they're planning, maybe planning it again in the future, but came very close this time, but was not funded. Item D, just, James Rhodes asked me to announce that they have received an emergency solution grant to prevent homelessness, $58,000. And as I recall, this was a regional grant. Get a nod from James. Item E, want to give you an update regarding the joint anti-bullying resolution, and also want to recognize, first of all, that this month, the month of October, is anti-bullying month that is being recognized nationally. And Janice Gallagher and myself have continued to meet and work with the school superintendent and their legal counsel to develop this, and we are, our intention is to bring this back on November 20. We would like the school board to take action on the resolution first, then it come to you as the board of commissioners, and then we would then forward it on to the members of the General Assembly for any consideration as noted in the resolution. Item F is a status report on the Chicago Sewer Project. This has been a very lengthy project, but we are about 99.9% complete on the project. There are just a few minor cleanups Phil Dickerson tells me need to occur on the project, but the Phil, the cut over would be soon, or has it been cut over yet for use? That's, that's fine. The, the project is, the construction project is 99.9% complete, but Phil is saying the school system has some, some ends on their end in order to tie it into the, the line itself, but that one is coming to a conclusion. And just want to add a lot, one other item that's not on the agenda, just want the board to be aware that internally, we are talking with emergency management officials and health officials regarding the topic of Ebola and what it means to Pitt County, both from a county perspective for our residents, as well as what it means for us as a provider of services. We'll be meeting this week on that and maybe even have other subsequent meetings to be ahead of the curve and to make sure that we can respond if and when needed. So I'll head, Mr. Chairman.
That last one's well taken, Mr. Manager. Dwayne, I believe you're next.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Next item on your agenda is the monthly financial report for the general fund as of September 30th, 2014. This report does represent, believe it or not, but we have officially closed one quarter of fiscal activity. We're already three months plus into the fiscal year. Pleased to report that as of 25% of the fiscal year being completed, we have collected 37.8% of our anticipated revenues, and we've only spent 21.6% of our projected or budgeted expenditures. We continue to see a good difference of revenue over expenditures. You'll actually see, for comparison, we're up $2.3 million in our difference from prior year. And through analysis, it appears that that's primarily attributable to an increase in collection of avaloreum taxes, which is a good indicator. It also is attributable to some increased DSS revenues that we're seeing this year as opposed to last, to the prior year. So with that, I would seek your approval for this.
Thank you, Mr. Hold. It's always good to spend, to take in more than you spend.
Yes, sir.
Do we have a motion to...
We accept the report.
Second. Thank you. Okay. Ms. Booker.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The Pitt County fiscal year to date, July 1, 2014 through September 30, 2014, combined collection rate for current year taxes on real and personal property is 66.12%. The combined rate one year ago on real and personal property and registered motor vehicles was 63.6%. One thing that I do want to tell you, part of our increased collections, collection rate, which you should see throughout the year and at year-end, is due to us not billing on the motor vehicles. The state sends out the invitation to renew. So therefore, there are no, there are no bills being charged. The revenue comes into the finance department for the county, and then they will proportion out to the county and the municipality their share of those revenues. Typically, all in years past, across all of the state, the motor vehicle rate was pulling the collection rate down because it was always under what the real and personal rate was. You don't have this to figure into the real and personal now, so that's part of the reason that you will see an increase in that tax collection rate and should send, continue to see that rate throughout the year and year-end.
Do we have a motion for approval?
I move. Second.
Mr. Flot.
I'd like to ask a question.
Yes, yes, sir, Mr. James.
Does the state charge us anything to collect that money? If so, what percentage?
Yes, and it depends on the method of payment. I don't have that breakout with me, but I can get that breakout for you.
Are we ahead of them by doing it this way?
Yes. In the beginning, people were getting used to the system, so the revenue, we would see an increase on that. Now it's pretty much leveled out. We may see an increase or a slight decrease now, but we have seen an increase over that in the end.
So we're not going to lose any?
No.
Hard to believe pertaining to the state trying to get more money.
Well, you don't have a collection rate dragging in.
Anything else, Mr. James?
That's all I want to say.
All right, Mr. Elliott.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Item four is to discuss, present a pine tree project at the office park. Danny Lauderdale with Agriculture Extension can come forward and make a brief presentation. We have a proposal to, to plant some of the land out at the office park in pine trees, and we'll explain to you what, what our rationale on this is here in just a moment.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Yes, I've been speaking with Mr. Elliott for about a year now on an idea of planting pine trees to reduce mowing costs that we have. A lot of acres at the Pitt County Office Park, and currently, under the contract that the county has, it's costing, going to cost $1,000 an acre per year to mow this property. What I have proposed is to plant pine trees, live alley pines, in place of that to reduce those costs. And you can see on the screens here, the cost of that would be about $37.50 an acre to do some pre-plant fertilization, to get the nutrients up where they need to be, $135 per acre for machine planting, that includes the cost of the trees and labor and everything to do that, $90 per acre for a post-plant herbicide. The trees would be planted in January through April, and then the post-plant herbicide would be in the early summer of the following year. And then another fertilization at the same cost done after planting, again, to get those trees off to a good start. And then after about five years in, five to 10 years, there may be a potential need, depending on competition, for another herbicide application to keep unwanted growth down in the area. So estimated cost to establish it would be $300 to $390 an acre, depending on those herbicide applications. There are some other potential savings besides just the $1,000 per acre per year. The establishment costs will be recouped at 15 to 20 years if the county chooses to come in and thin those trees at that time. There's also the potential for buildings and grounds to rake up pine straw and use that versus purchasing pine straw. And then, again, if you want to harvest at maturity, there's certainly some extra income there that can happen as well. And it was, I think you may have a map in your packet with you that is not on my presentation, but there's a highlighted area there that shows you approximately a 10-acre area to be planted, and it's kind of between agricultural center towards the attends plant that's there.
If I can describe, it's an aerial photo they have in front of them, and the area that's cross-hatched in red is, is roughly the area that we're talking about planting. The, the building in the middle there is the agriculture extension building. The area, the top of the aerial photo is the detention center, and then you can see Old Creek Road there. We're not, we're not talking about planting the entire office park, just this, this edge boundary on the, the north.
We have it on the screen now, there. So that's, that's the area that we're talking about. The whole, the entire site has about, what, 30 acres, I believe, of, of open area, but we were proposing as a start to see how it would go to, to do part of this area, not block off some of the buildings from the, the view of Old Creek Road as people enter, enter those as well. Also, just wanted to show a photo here of, this is what, in a grassy area, when you plant pines and use a herbicide application shortly after planting, what they may look like in two to three years. And then I've got another photo here that shows, this is probably around 10, 12 years old, what a planting may look like down the road. This one, of course, has had some, some people doing some work on it, picking up sticks and limbs and that kind of thing. So if you didn't do that, it wouldn't be quite as clean, but certainly would reduce the, the mowing costs that you have in an area like that.
It's always good to have plans to, to save money, but I planted a lot of trees, and I never have paid $300, $300 or $400 per tree. I'd look at that issue.
I'd look at several of them. That's $300 to, $300 to $390 per acre.
I know, I'm talking about per acre, too. Dr. Johnson?
I just wanted to comment, I don't, don't mean to be smart, but did you ask permission of the geese? They, they seem to want to take over that area.
They do. They do, and, and actually, that, I mean, planting that area, I mean, that may move the geese to another area, and actually, the more you would plant, the fewer geese you would have, because they do like that open area around water, around the pond out there. So that is true.
Yes, sir, Mr. James.
What is your long-term plan for this land?
I think that's...
Say 20, 30, 40, or 50 years from now, because what you're doing now, you're going to make a forest there.
Correct.
Mr. James?
You're using valuable land. We get no tax money from them. The only thing it's going to do is cost us, and this land that you're talking about, what's that called, a school?
Mr. James, this is obviously the county office park, and long-term plans for this would be a county office building, would be an administrative building for the sheriff's office. Not necessarily in these areas, there's other vacant land that's even open here that could be used for those purposes. There's more land than we could build on in this area. What we're trying to is reduce the, the cost of mowing. We estimate that the mowing costs are about $1,000 per acre per year.
Who, I'd like to get that, that deal.
Mr. James, this, this tonight is just a report. It's not...
Okay, all right.
But I believe you, you or any other member of the board have got some input you want to put to it, Mr. Garris.
I would, when I read this, I thought it was a good plan. It's going to save us money, and yeah, we're going to be growing trees on it, and if we have a long-term plan to put a building or something out there, you just go out there and cut the trees down and sell, and sell the timber. And so it seems to me like to be a win-win.
Do you know how much it costs to cut these trees down and to, and to fix it for a building?
But I also know that the trees are valuable and you can sell them for lumber.
Okay. You went good.
Do you have anything else you want to present, sir?
I'd just say, regarding that remark, you can expect, if you just did a 25-year rotation, if you decided it was a forestry project and not just to plan an area to reduce mowing, a 25-year rotation, you could expect a conservative estimate of, say, $3,000 per acre income off of that, in addition to any other thing. If you grow some pine straw, do that type of thing, that'd be some of the savings.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate the information.
You're welcome.
Does the board want to contribute anything, Father?
Mr. Chairman, what I was looking for, maybe just the overall consensus of the board, if we were to go ahead and move forward on this, we just want to report to you that we were working on this project, but if I hear reservations from you not to do it, we won't move forward, but otherwise, we were wanting to go ahead and plan for the planning that Mr. Lauderdale mentioned in January, I believe.
Correct. Sometime between January and April.
I think it's a good idea myself.
You have my consensus.
Mine, too.
As I said in the beginning, and, all right, just a minute, it's a good idea to save money, but your, your figures are a little somewhere missing for me. I'd like some more information. Go ahead and do your planning, but some, like the assertion you made that after 20 years, you get $3,000 per acre of timber?
Oh, man.
But anyway, thank you.
Sure, and I have that information, Mr. Chairman, with Mr. Elliott, the cost of the Forest Service, and other information from the university, so.
I wanted to say that, that I've had some experience with the Timber Project over in Wayne County before my brother and my two sisters and I sold the land, and the, the timber gets in the way of a lot of what you want to do. But you can recover some of the cost, and it's an interesting procedure to watch the timber companies cut the pine timber. They, from my perspective, they know what they're doing. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I believe you've got consensus, Mr. Manager, to go forward, and he's going to give you some more information.
Yes, sir, we'll report back.
All right, so let's move on to the consent agenda then.
Motion to approve.
Second. Thank you. All right, first item for decision.
Mr. Chairman, number one is Resolution Recognizing National Disability Employment Awareness Month, and this is at the request of Commissioner Hammond. You put this on the agenda?
Have a motion, Mr. Hammond?
I move.
And you'll just need to complete your last motion first. That's the motion on the consent agenda. Mr. Hammond would need to vote on that.
Dave, I believe you need to vote on the last one. All right, Mr. Garris, you got a motion?
I, make a motion. We accept the resolution. Second.
All right, it's the second. I didn't hear it. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, let's vote. Okay, Mr. Elliott?
Yes, and the next one is a budget amendment for $4,220. This is for use of contingency. There are some jury pool room chairs and also some conference room chairs within the courthouse that are needing reupholstered, and in lieu of actually replacing them and buying new furniture, we are going to use the North Carolina Department of Corrections, as we have in the past, to do reupholstering. They can do it at a fraction of the cost it would cost to, to replace this, this furniture new. We've had it done in multiple instances, and it comes back very professional, and that would be the purpose of this budget amendment.
Do we have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Thank you, let's vote. All right, next, James.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're bringing back before you tonight two rezoning requests that have been before you previously, and with that, it's been sort of a lengthy process. So what I'd like to do first, Mr. Chairman, is kind of take you through the process, where we've been, then I'll get into the individual rezoning requests. First, we are dealing in tandem with two rezoning requests that are adjacent to one another. The first rezoning request, again, for Judson Whitehurst, both along 264 East. One is a down zoning, the first one is down zoning, that being a less intensive use, going from general industrial, which it is currently, to rural agricultural. Conversely, rezoning request number two is to upzone to a more intensive use, and we'll get into the details of that in a little while. Originally, it was 185 acres to be rezoned to general industrial from rural agricultural. That has been reduced by about 62 acres in your proposal in your package tonight. As far as the process to date, has been quite a while. The planning board dealt with it back in March. Since, the board of commissioners have dealt with it, first, we had two public hearings, one for each one of these requests back in September. After that point in time, staff was given a directive to work... After that point in time, staff was given a directive to work with the two parties that were involved, the Davenport's and the Whitehurst's, to come back with some proposals, some compromise. Our first meeting was at the very end of July, where we began that discussion. We came back to the board in September, asked for additional time to consider it, and we met again towards the end of September. And we believe that we have a compromise. I know you heard from Mr. Davenport, David Davenport, earlier. Still, some reluctance there. I guess with any compromise, there can be. But what we walked away from the September twenty-fifth meeting was that there would not be any opposition to this proposal moving forward. So with that, I wanted to remind you what the property is that we're dealing with. Two rezoning requests, number one and number two. The down zoning side is here on the east, closer to Sticks Road. And the property that we'll talk more specifically about is number two here. This is the area that will go to general industrial, and you'll see the compromise line in a map in just a minute. So first, number one, this is the down zone side on the east side, going from general industrial, which it currently is, to rural agricultural. This is, as you remember, we had zoning put in place countywide back in two thousand and three. Initially, this was requested as an expansion area for EJE recycling. This is the area that we're contending with, and this is about two hundred acres total here. Covers three parcels. And as far as our land use plans considered, concerned, rural residential, agricultural, very low density, primarily, as it sounds like, is for agricultural purposes or residential. And you can see on the existing land use portion, none of this area is currently being used for general industrial. There is a small area up here for residential. So again, the current uses there are more aligned with what is being requested be rezoned to. This is your current zoning map, and you can see, again, all this in gray, and this subject property is currently zoned as general industrial. The rural agricultural district, again, is to accommodate these very low-density residential uses or agricultural uses. And back, as we've discussed previously, the planning board approved or recommended approval of this back at their March meeting, and also gave its consistency statement that it is reasonable and within the public interest for this down zoning on the east side. Staff concurs with that. And what we're recommending is that we hear both or we talk about both of these in concert tonight. So I'm going to move forward with the second rezoning request. And this is the upzone part, moving from rural agricultural to general industrial, this being on the west side of the current EJE property. As I mentioned, the compromise that we met about on September twenty-fifth, the original property in total was about a hundred and eighty-five acres. This has been reduced down to about a hundred and twenty-four. New surveys included in your package, and you can see, bordered in red on the screen, is the entire parcel, the hundred and eighty-five acre parcel. This is the new property or the new boundary line. As you can see, it's moved northward from the full extent, and the Davenport property, just to orient you, is down on the southern side here and as well off to the far west over here. So again, a bit more area for buffer area between these two property owners. Just to reorient you again, as far as where we are with the land use plan, a request was made by the Whitehurst's back last year to change the land use plan designation on this property. That was approved by this board in November, and that moved this property in the land use plan from heavy commercial to industrial. And this is what we ended up with. The previous land use plan did not show this area as industrial. The current one does. And again, this is a blow-up of that area, showing the existing land or existing land use plan designation as general industrial. And again, with the heavy commercial industrial designation, this really coincides well with the intended use at some point for an expansion of EJE. This would be a permitted use within that area. And you can see on the map currently, this is existing land uses. The primary portion of EJE in operation right now is just off to the east here. There's also an area that's been dealt with by this board previously that we consider as an industrial use. It's actually a sand mine in this, in this general vicinity. So a portion of it is already under conditional use permit, being used for an industrial use. And finally, here's your existing zoning map. And this is the area, again, proposed for general industrial use, where it's currently rural agricultural. And as we've discussed, the planning board has also voted, not unanimously, but five to three back in March, to recommend approval of this rezoning request. And that was for the full one hundred and eighty-five acres. Since this is a subset of that area, we also, at the staff level, recommend approval of this. So we're recommending, and our attorney has worked with us over the past couple of months with consistency statements, and you'll see in your package tonight, much more elaborate than you're used to seeing. But we're trying to ensure that we're meeting all the new general statutes as far as that's concerned. So tonight, we're asking you to adopt the consistency statements for both and approve both the requests. And this ultimately, if you move forward with it, these are the maps. Or the one on the right-hand side is what you'll end up with after the rezoning is, or both rezonings are considered. That's our report tonight. Welcome any questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, James. Reference to your agenda, under items for decision, three and four are the two topics that we just talked about, that James had presented. It's been before the planning board, and you heard what he said the recommendation was about that. Watch the pleasure of the board in this request as number three.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
First, I want to thank the planning department for working this out. It's been a long process, as most of you know. We have tried to satisfy both parties. And when it comes to a situation like this, of course, it's very difficult to do. But from what I gather, we are much closer now than we have been. And I believe I have the motions to make, and you might want to look as I make these. Motion number one, to adopt the consistent statements as described in the agenda abstract for Judson Whitehurst rezoning request, number one, and Judson Whitehurst rezoning request, number two. That is the first motion, I suppose, which take each one of them separately. Is that correct?
Well, you do, I think your motion was for both of them, Mr. James. Of course, you can do however you want to.
No, no, we want to do.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to say, we've worked with our legal staff, and the consistency statements per general statute need to be adopted first. So that first motion is in order first before we actually deal with the rezonings.
And you can do both cases.
That's the number three I referenced, right, James?
Yes, sir, you can do both consistency statements in one motion and then come back with the rezonings for both.
So, Mr. Chairman, that'd be three and four, the way Mr. James has read it. Items number three and four.
So you want me also to go, James, with number two?
No, sir.
Just stop right there with number one.
I'll second that.
All right, now, in discussion, Dr. Johnson, did you have something you want to say?
Yes, I did. I have walked over most of this area that is under consideration. And one of the problems I see in the long run is that currently, living within the city of Greenville, the deer and the bear are moving off of this property into the city of Greenville. They are essentially forced to do so by this development. And I see this in the long run, a problem. I'm not sure how we handle it in an appropriate manner. And the, the county attorney can advise us with this regard. But, but I know that there are a lot of deer out there. And when any kind of development occurs, those deer move into the city of Greenville. And there's one particular area that I frequently travel where these deer are being killed by vehicles. And that presents a real problem in terms of damage to vehicles. So I just wanted to point out, Mr. Chairman, that when we make decisions, there are consequences. And not all of the consequences are good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. If there's no further discussion, we've got a motion's been made and seconded. You ready to vote?
Yes.
All right.
Now, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make the second motion, if I may, to approve Judson Whitehurst's rezoning request, number one, to rezone two hundred and four acres, six point sixty-nine acres, from general industrial to rural agricultural. And approve Judson Whitehurst's rezoning request, number two, to rezoning one hundred and twenty-three point eighty-eight acres from rural agriculture to general industry.
Do we have a, have a second, sir?
And, Mr. Chairman, if somebody wants to look with a map, I mean, I don't, but if they want to see the map, you can.
Is there any discussion on this motion? It's been made and seconded. If not, are you ready to vote? All right, thank you, James.
Thank you.
Item number five, do we have a motion on that?
Motion to appoint Tom Skoll and Dana Smith to one-year term with the Pitt County Home and Adult Care Community Advisor Committee and reappoint Mrs. Brown to that committee.
Second.
No other appointments being made, let's vote. All right, Madam Attorney?
Mr. Chairman, it's been suggested that this board go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen point one-one A three, attorney-client privilege to consult with an attorney employed by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body and also pursuant to one forty-three, three eighteen point one-one A one, to prevent the disclosure of confidential information.
That having been said, do we have a motion?
I may, second.
So? Thank you.
And I'll need you to vote one more time because that last one cleared out the last screen.
All right.
So this vote now will count for your closed session.
How's that?
Thank you.
Thank you. Got any outside chair? Got any people who want to come in? Thank you, sir. All right, watch the pleasure of the board at this time.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve our closed session minutes for October sixth, two thousand and fourteen, as to the content on.
Second. All right, let's vote. Any other motions that would be acceptable at this time?
You want the motion to adjourn? No, you don't.
Thank you. Any, any commissioners' comments?
Yeah, that's a comment.
I cut that out. Okay, motion made, second.
I'd like to make, make a comment that I think early voting starts Thursday. Is that not correct? And I hope all the citizens will take advantage of that. And I'm not running, so nobody paid me to do that.
That having been said, all in favor of a motion to adjourn? Wait a minute, Tom, did you want to say something?
No.
Dr. Hammond?
Deanie now.
Hi, Dave.
Mr. Chairman, I was very, very pleased and very excited this morning to pick up the morning paper and see how our attorney and how our communications director had lit up the, the, the local paper. I mean, it wasn't, they didn't even wait to get it into work week. They printed it all outside of work week. And I, I really enjoyed it, and I congratulate Janice, and I congratulate Ciara.
We all concur with that, Reverend Hammond. That having concluded the discussion on the motion to adjourn, you ready to vote? Thank you.